It's on.
Motion to read adjourn? All in favor?
Recombin?
Recombin, not read adjourn.
Okay. See? Moving right along. Right. New business. Item B, resolution welcoming the Golden Rule Peace Boat to Rhode Island in support of a nuclear free world. I don't know if that was in the book.
Oh, I know.
I remember reading it. Do we have to read this one into the record too? Okay.
Ask Mr. D.
As presented. Please, proclamation through town sergeant's office.
Oh, you're first.
Thank you. Yourself. Who was, what, what country did they come from? Where'd they come from?
Hobwachs.
You mean Hobwachs?
Attorney Hobwachs.
Yeah, I think so.
I believe that came from Tennessee or Long Compton.
Wait, this.
It came from.
Yeah, I think it did. I think, yeah, I think it came from Long Compton. Um, was it down here, Tim?
No, it wasn't down there. So, there's still?
So, let's get into it.
It comes to the wages and jobs.
All right. Motion to approve the resolution welcoming the Golden Rule Peace Boat to Rhode Island in support of a nuclear free world.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, C, resolution authorizing Town of Exeter Emergency Management Director with the Town of Exeter Town Planner as alternate to proceed on behalf of the Town of Exeter as a sponsor in the planning phase of the Wood Pocket Tuck River's watershed flood protection project with the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District under the Watershed and Flood Prevention Operations Program by the United States Department of Agriculture slash Natural Resources Conservation Service.
Um, Cal had, um, put this in on behalf of Dory, you know, being the representative of this. And the resolution states her salary.
Something with USBA, so, and, uh, all in favor? I mean, motion to approve this resolution?
So.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, D.
We didn't get second on that.
No. Second.
Thank you.
D, resolution authorizing the creation of emergency management hazard mitigation advisory. That's to redo that whole book, isn't it? Is that the?
Can I, can I just say something? I, I've worked on this with, uh, Dory, and then she said she wanted to change, and she hasn't responded to an email I sent. So, I would, I would kick this over another month.
Okay.
Give her an opportunity to change if she thinks it's nice to.
We'll continue that till next month. That works.
Let's tell her.
Sure.
Item B, Department of Public Works requesting lots to bid forestry bucket truck. You're up, Rob.
Um, yes, um, I don't know if we want to push this off a month or if we can do, open it now, but we have one of the, um, dealers actually giving us a demo this month for two weeks.
You want to continue it for one month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just in my investigating the units and make sure it's going to be suitable for us and a good unit.
Now, this is the one you said that would take like eighteen months to get it to have one stock or the demo.
No, this is a demo.
Okay.
And they're offering it to us because I asked a lot of questions and they gave me other towns to, that have them, see if the pros and cons of this particular truck, so. And they didn't. One up saying, hey, we'll send you one, see if you like it. So, we're going to go after some big dead trees here in town.
Okay. Continue to next month.
Thank you.
Uh, item M, Wood Pocket Tuck Wild and Seenic Rivers stewardship council request to replant tree in memory of Evelyn Green, Town Clerk, nineteen sixty through nineteen eighty-six on front lawn of Town Clerk's office building.
So, when they were here doing the, um, rain garden, they noticed the stump. Um, originally.
Was it a plum tree or?
It was, there was a motion by council back when to do plant a plum tree in honor of Evelyn Green, Pat's mom, who was well-serving clerk. That tree died. Steve and I planted another plum tree that died.
Plum trees don't live around here.
No, so, so they want, they have some more, some money left over and they're willing to buy the tree for us. DPW will plant it.
Crap out.
But it's, yeah, it doesn't, but not a plum tree. If you could.
I'd have to watch the plum tree sell.
They can, unless, so if you make the motion for it, if you make the motion for it, they can select the tree. Yeah. And if you don't mind.
Go ahead, someone do a motion for that one.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion, uh, to let the, um, Woodland, Tucket, Wild and Seenic Rivers, um, decide on what kind of tree and to plant it, uh, in memory of Evelyn Green.
Second.
Oh, it did in front of the town.
All in favor? Aye. Uh, item G, Town Clerk's Office Request to Close Town Offices Monday, July third, two thousand twenty-three. I don't have a problem with that.
What about the DPW more?
Should be the whole town, it would be the whole, all the all town offices, the library, DPW.
The fourth is on a Tuesday. I know I'm not going to be here. I think everybody's going to take a vacation day.
It would be all town offices. Yeah.
It would be all town.
Uh, can we do that? We have, how, 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 do they have to take a vacation day? Does everyone have a vacation day to use?
No, they wouldn't take a vacation day.
You're closing, um, if you're closing offices, we don't have to take vacation at sick time.
Well, you don't have to take it.
No. No, it's just like if there's no day.
It's like a, yeah.
Okay. Can we afford to lose a day with the DPW?
Yeah, you're going to say no.
Are you going to have a staff?
Make it work.
Are you going to have a staff? I mean, are your people taking vacation days?
They haven't taken yet. However, that could change tomorrow.
It happens. It's happened before when we had like a Monday holiday and, and he's got a skeletal crew and skeletal crew here.
And they should be before, yeah.
So far, I think there's two, probably two people here.
Seven, like, two people.
Monday. I'll be there.
I, 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 I mean, we have this. We have the, the vacation plans for the year. I don't have an issue with it mainly because of the holidays on the Tuesday. I mean, if it's a Wednesday or Thursday, it'd probably be a different story. Yeah. Let me do.
Please.
I'll make a motion to, uh, close the, the, request to close town offices from Monday, July third, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next one, item H, uh, Dory sent me an email to take that off the agenda. That's still not worked, so. Do we need to vote on that or no? Item I, Exeter Public Library Request to Use American Rescue Plan Funds to Pay Zarela Plumbing and Heating one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for the new HVAC system at the library. That's already in, isn't it, Ken?
Yeah, this is just a formality.
We just haven't paid him.
I give you a, it, it worked out very well.
Yeah.
The problem with the whole system was that the, uh, they never hooked up the, on the what, the base door, they never hooked up the controls from day one. And that's why the system kept on running, they weren't even running.
Only one pump was going, right?
Yeah.
We only had one pump.
But that's a little piece of shit hooker. So, the base board heat never really worked. Only one area, right? Only one of the floor zone part. For twenty years, twenty years.
Okay. I'll make a motion to pay Zarela Plumbing and Heating one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for the new HVAC system from the American Rescue Plan box.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Exeter Public Library Director Request to Go Out to Bid for Roof Curtains. Is that Champ LeMoy?
Yeah, that was just the, um, it could have been added on to the roof, but wasn't.
Okay.
So, just, it's the two corners in the front, just so the wall doesn't be on the walkway.
Okay.
Would you make a motion?
Sorry to get back on anything I like back.
I make a motion to, uh, pay.
To approve.
Going out to bid.
Going out to bid.
Make a motion to go out to bid for roof curtains at the Exeter Public Library.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, K, Exeter Public Library Director Request to Go Out to Bid for the coat ceiling refinishing. Same thing, Champ LeMoy?
Make a request to go out to bid and make a motion to make a request to go out to bid for the portico ceiling refinishing at the Exeter Public Library.
And second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, L, Exeter Public Library Director Request to Watch a Bid for a Privacy Pod. This is Champ LeMoy also.
No, hell's a privacy pod.
Laurie.
What?
Laurie.
It's the, um, library.
Laurie grid.
Library looks around.
No, I don't.
I think it's just a place where you can have like confidential.
Those are the privacy pod that you sit in and have a meeting or.
Where is the pod? Outside?
It's like, oh, it's inside. It's like a phone booth.
I was just going to say, it's like a phone booth.
We call it silence from cat's mouth.
Don't we have meeting rooms already? I'm just asking. We have to have a meeting? Do we have?
No. It's not a privacy. Nobody says you want to do a meeting call or something. Okay. All libraries here.
Okay.
They have got sound now.
Okay.
Some office parts, maybe in town hall would have one.
For the town hall?
With a couch?
With a couch, yeah.
That's a big privacy pod. I was thinking just a little.
Any motion?
I make a motion go out to bid for a privacy pod at the Exeter Public Library.
Second.
All in favor?
It's a day, Ken.
Uh, M, Friends of Exeter Animals Request to Locate at the Animal Shelter A Forty by Ten Foot Steel Storage Unit donated by the Friends of Exeter Animals to be utilized for donated animal food and care items. I read your letter.
Yep.
Is the garage full of junk again?
It is. They, the problem is, is they go home and people come overnight and just put stuff, and it's good, usable, new items.
Yeah. Where do they want to put it?
The thinking, um, you know, the little shack that they have, um, there's a training area in the back that's fenced in. You want to put it straight out towards the road, so you just see the, the front door of it.
When I read your letter, it goes back to ten or eleven years ago with that garage where the same thing, and Ray Morrissey cleaned it up. And now it's full again. Yeah. Reluctantly, I'm going to make a motion to.
Clean the garage.
That gives them a place to put.
To allow them to install this shelter, provided that garage is cleaned out, left clean, and it's utilized for what it was originally built for, which was to put that truck in there, not the yard sale stuff. There was two refrigerators full of dead animals in there at one time. Are they still there?
Well, the freezer, um, and that's what they do until they get enough to have the company come out and, um, cremate them.
Is there a second?
They were collecting them.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, what, wait, wait, what is the point?
They're donating it.
Don't need it.
Okay.
It's like thirteen thousand dollars, but it's okay.
I don't think they're that much money now.
Yeah, well, because they put sliding doors on the sides so they can access it from the side section at all. It's a nice unit, believe me. It's not trashy.
You're going to have to keep them in line, Rob.
I will.
This stuff.
Because your terms are pretty much my terms with it, so it's.
Okay. Uh, the next one, item N, Rob has asked me to put that, continue that for one month to do more investigations. And item O, propose statewide legislation.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I was here for, for the end. Um, that, can I just bring something up to you guys real quick, just so you know? I own the property across the street from that.
Okay.
And I also live on one thirty-three West Shore Drive. He's cementing those, and as of, I took a picture of six o'clock tonight, he's cementing all those rocks.
We're, we're going to do our due diligence on this one because this, it goes back, somewhere along the line, all those roads were private.
Yeah.
Somewhere along the line, the town started maintaining them.
Okay.
So, we're going to do a little bit of research on that. Sorry for making you wait that long, so.
To make sure it's not really his, his property.
Oh, my name is Jonathan Mitchell.
Okay, and you, you're in house?
One thirty-three West Shore Drive is my residential, but I own a lot across, which is four West Shore Drive.
Okay.
So, um, Rob, I know he was talking with you and I, because when he walked over to my property, he got the camera turned on, so I I had it on recording him yelling at you and whatnot, so. Um, and him complaining, saying that my fence was just, I took a measurement forward, it's three feet off. I called Hal before I did it and everything, Hal Morgan, so it's.
Okay, it's, yeah.
He's just, he harasses our, our families constantly. That's why I don't want my wife and kids to be here too, like, to know, that's why the fence went off. He's just harasses us.
Sorry you had to wait this long.
No, it's okay. The state police have been involved in that, they said like, put up fence and just get approval and stuff like that, so.
Because he asked me at the beginning of the meeting, because he has some paperwork, we're going to, we're going to do this. Like I said, it's, at one time, it was private road, so we, we're not sure where boundaries are.
Totally understand, just wanted to.
But the next meeting is going to be July tenth? Yeah, so we won't be here on the third because of the holiday.
Okay, yeah, because that, even though this Saturday, there was a truck doing a delivery, and because they can't turn around, they hit my fence as well, so. So, it's, I, I know you got to do your diligence, I just figured it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
No, it's okay.
Uh, O is.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Propose statewide legislation to modify land use regulations. Town and asset are, and that's in regards to all the state.
And he asked that you continue it to next month because he has some info he wants to put on there.
By next month, it'll be warm. So, okay. Unfinished business. Use of American Rescue Plan Act Funds, Town Hall Edition versus New Town versus Purchase of Seven Forty-two Ten-Rod Road. That is the one item we want to discuss on the twentieth of July? Do a special meeting, twentieth of July?
Yeah.
Is there a question?
We already have that in the, in the books.
No, that was the one we discussed.
July? You said. I mean, June, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, June. Wow, thanks.
One time, six thirty-seven.
Six thirty would work, yeah.
The, you might want to talk a little bit about the financial town meeting right now. If you want a resolution that would approve the purchasing of that without the, you know, using the American Rescue Plan. It's like, uh, you can't.
Throw a resolution in there, so.
Or just in case, wasn't it?
Yeah, just in case, yeah, because that's, we didn't want to do a meeting the night before the financial town meeting. So, we figured, then we're going to do it the following Monday, but that's in Juneteenth, which is federal holiday, so we figured do it on the twentieth, which is, would be a week after the financial town meeting. Yeah. Okay, that works.
What's the resolution to say?
Just in case.
Just in case, it's a region.
Okay.
I'll call you.
All right. Be good. B, July two thousand twenty-two, Communication Number Sixteen, Governor McKee, Rhode Island Capital Projects Fund, Multi-Purpose Community Facilities Matching Grant. Nothing. Keep leaving on there. Okay, next up, C, Split Rock Mobile Park Request of Electrical Inspector Randy McGovern to obtain engineer's report and require violations to be correct, uh, be corrected in time.
Good evening, President Patterson, that was the council. My name is Paul Bogosian, I'm the attorney for Split Rock Mobile Park. I promised Mr. Menruzak I would be brief. Uh, I submitted a, uh, an email to, uh, Ms. Hawkins on Saturday morning advising that the work that was required under the two thousand twenty-one permit is finally complete, I believe. I don't know if Mr. McGovern has yet inspected. Uh, I'm not sure if he's, uh, he was copied on my email, but I don't, I haven't heard from him. And I have suggested that the additional permit that was taken out this past October, which should address the balance of the poles that are required to be addressed or replaced within the park are to be installed by the end of August. We have a, uh, accepted a proposal for purchase installation in that timeframe. I am hopeful that the council, we acknowledge that we are well beyond the deadlines that I set. Uh, but we ask that the council.
I don't mean to interrupt, but this has been going on for over seven, eight months.
The goal line is in sight.
You're saying August, August first, August thirty?
August thirty-first, I believe, is what I put in my email. We have to purchase the poles, install them. That is not a small task. As I indicated when we were here last time, we are dealing with a very tight, very tight quarters in installing poles in, in areas that are close to trailers, streets, freeways, water lines, any number of previously installed infrastructure that makes the task a bit more complicated.
How many poles do I have to put in?
Five. That will be about seventy, let's say about seventy-five percent of the poles in the park will be done in the last five years? Seven years?
I said three or four.
Three or four years.
Questions?
Part? Uh, I don't really know what to say. It's just dragging on. You think it'll be done by August?
These are, these are third parties. This is their timeframe, that's what they've told us they can do. Yes, people do.
You guys are accountable, you know, you're.
I understand that.
You're accountable to get it done. It's just dragging on. I don't understand that kind of thinking. But, yeah.
Okay.
Got any questions, Dave?
No.
I hate to give you more time because you've been dragging it out so long. I mean, this is going to be the, the final, final time. I mean, it's, it's going on too long.
You said that last time.
I, I, is, is the twenty-one foot trench that had to be dug by hand, is it done?
Yeah.
That's done?
Yeah.
Because right now, there is no license for this park, correct?
Yeah. It was not related.
That's correct, it's still sort of pending, pending. May I just interject one thing? We pulled a permit for this work in October. So, this was the second part of the proposal following the meeting that we had at the site in December of twenty-one. It was understood by everyone at that meeting, by whom I mean, uh, Mr. McGovern, Mr. DeFrancesco, John from, Magaron from DVR, that this was going to be a stepped process because of the magnitude of the work to be done. So, we got the ones done that we said we were going, now the ones are done that we said were going to be done by last, last year. And we were on, with the understanding that what work we're doing now was to be done this year. It was going to be a two-year process.
That's the first I've heard of two-year project. Uh, like I said, um.
I can direct you back to my letter of, uh, of December twenty-one to twenty.
At this time, is DVR still involved in this just?
Tangentially, I mean, they, they, they're basically throwing it back to us, as I understand it, because they're satisfied with the agreement that, um, Mr. Bogosian, um, crafted with, with the, uh, with the department's, uh, approval. That correct, Paul?
Yes.
So, they, as long as they're not, uh, out of compliance with that agreement, they're happy, essentially. Uh, but they, they do acknowledge that there still needs to be the approval of the town.
I would, I'm going to let this go forward, but I expect to see you here July tenth with a report.
July tenth?
Yeah, whereas, hear me out. Even if you got one pole in in the next month, I want, because after the end of August, i- it's going to the point where we're done dealing with it.
Mr. Patterson, I, we don't do this one pole at a time, they deliver them, so it will be, they said they need, whatever time they said they need to get it done, but it's, it's like, they do it in, they don't come out and do one pole at a time. I can provide this.
Do you have the poles on site now?
No. No.
I'm in the construction field, that's why I'm asking you, because that's what gets me about this getting dragged out so far. I know about supply chain issues, I know about everything going on in the construction industry, and I've never seen anything like it with this project. This should have been done a long time ago.
Two reasons. Cost and, and manpower. And that's the manpower, and he has to come up with money to do it with what we have for income that we have from the park.
Well, like I said, at, at the end of August, if it's not done, then, then we're just going to go to the next step. It, it's been going on for years, that's the problem. I can, literally thirty years ago, I can remember reading about the same issues in that park. And here we are, two thousand twenty-three. We've been going at it since the last year and a half, and nothing's getting done.
Oh, that's, I completely disagree with that. Things are getting done. The work that was applied for in the permit, it was issued in early twenty-two, is complete. The work that is in the October twenty-two permit is going to be done in the timeframe I'm suggesting out. That's, I mean, we're getting there.
At the end of August, I'm done dealing with it. And I'm sure, tonight, two members of the council are here, and I know they're not happy with what's going on down there, so. The ball's in your court, plain and simple. It's time to get it done.
Again, we say, please get it done. We're, we're trying. I mean, we have a time set. This is the end, we believe this is the end of the road.
I'm going to leave it on, you know, like I said, I, I expect to see a report from you in July, and I want to see when it's beginning of August. And at the end of August, we're going to see what happens, so.
May, may I suggest a written status for the July tenth meeting? This is costing him money that is better spent addressing the problem than it is having me up here before you.
I would like that written report at least the week before this council meeting, each one. Definitely, if there's any issues, I can get it right on this agenda for the following month, so.
So, the next.
She posts on the Wednesday before the, the Monday meeting, so.
July tenth is the next meeting, so you need the report, well, you said it was posted on the third, the fifth? Report seven five, and when is your August meeting?
First Monday of March.
Yeah.
So, seventh.
When is seventh?
So, the.
I need it by the Tuesday before the meeting.
Need it on the first of August, please.
You will have that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we need a motion? Or are we good?
Do you need a motion for a report? No.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, Signee Got Major Roots in the Town. Are we doing anything with that?
Yeah, I just want to get it from all the Rob, and it's, we have just a week.
Okay.
It's all smooth, man.
Continue. Uh, Memorial Day Parade Committee.
We can take that off.
Oh, you want to take it off, okay.
Yeah, the parade's over.
You need a vote on that? Motion to take it off.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Resolution Number Two Oh Two Three Dash Zero One, Resolution Urging Passage to State Legislation Regarding General Assembly Appropriations of Google Property Tax to State on Properties of Town Exeter. I haven't read the state budget yet, I don't think it's in there.
What do you want to do with this?
Uh, we can leave that on for one more month, July first, the year is over, the general. Uh, Item G, Town of Exeter Code Ordinances, Chapter Fourteen, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Four, Impact Fees. We're going to continue that till next month. Can't still working on it, we're trying to figure out what to do there. Do we need to, so next month, we'll have to extend it?
We probably might have to have a work session on that. And we might want to think about having Ben from Virginia zoom in on it.
We'll do a work, schedule a work session at the July meeting. So, July, do we want to extend that moratorium for another six months? That was only a six-month. So we'll have to put that on there. He's been going back and forth trying to figure out a way to do this.
Do we need a motion to extend it for another six months?
Well, we'll do it next month because we don't have it on the agenda. And then we can figure out... Because we were on the phone the other day about this one.
Yeah.
Okay. Town emails and records, officials, staff, boards, and commissions. Do we still need that on here?
We have your, the report from, um... Is that it, Mike?
We do. We have it. It is, it's still a... Some of the, I spoke to one gentleman and he's just, doesn't wanna hear it. I don't understand why. I, I kinda talked to him for a little while and I think he's just, doesn't understand why what he emails has to be seen by everybody. But he just has a mental block against understanding that. I says, you can always pick up the phone if you don't want the conversation in writing. You can pick up the phone and talk with someone. But it's something that we decided as a council. It's now, I don't know if you call an ordinance or whatever it is, but it's a rule that we have to use town emails. And I think everybody needs to get on board. I don't have that... I hate to make a thing of it with these people. These are professionals serving the community. But please, they gotta get on board. I asked them to please consider doing it. I don't know how we can coax them any further.
Okay, leaving our nails.
Please, we gave a directive.
We gave you a directive, right. What do we do? Make a, we're gonna make a thing of it now. It's what it's gonna come down to. Puts us in a bad situation.
Okay. Probably a man will call them up. That's surprising that Mike isn't doing it.
Yeah.
I can call him.
Exeter Land Trust.
Exeter Land Trust, who, who is in charge of?
Ben Wazinski.
Yeah.
He's the chair.
All right. I'll call number two. Richard Booth. This is Willfield. It's very hard to get a hold of.
So we're continuing that to July?
Okay. What can we do in the meantime? So just, what are we gonna do about it? You gonna talk to them?
Send them an email, please come in. You know, it's probably, it's a matter than coming in and setting it up on their own computer with James, too. That's what I have to do.
I don't think it's a matter of that. I think it's a matter they don't wanna do it. They just don't understand it. They don't agree with it. They don't want any part of it. That's what it is.
They never have to use it.
Can, can we, can, can we, can we, uh... Can we somehow mandate that, I think we talked about it last time, that we don't answer emails from these people or anyone on the board if it's not from a town email? Is that possible? I think we talked about that last month. We have to do something.
I think we'll still do it.
We'll still do it.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, then follow the directive to sign up for these new, the town email. Whatever you want.
The problem is with the comments, but makes them, if they use their private email, it makes their email open to...
Yeah, it's really silly.
Is their still, is their personal email still subject to, uh, records? Someone could get caught for this guy of all. So they're not protected anyway using their own personal email? So they think they're protected by not using it, but they're not.
You don't think they have to give it up as a record?
Well, I think they might. Yeah, but they, they, but they're not archived. We don't have control over it. That was the whole point of it. We all, everyone on the council agreed that this was a good move.
I guess they have a letter to him to be...
Send an email reminding them.
That's who they're writing the address.
How about if they do that? Send an email to them and...
Give them the email address. And say, if you haven't set it up yet, James will help you. Yes?
Yeah. So you want me to send the emails and...
No, Mike, that's, that's a good idea. Ask James for email address. Then he'll set it up.
Do you want this, Lynn? I have all their address.
Take it, take it.
All right.
Well, I don't wanna give it up.
You have it.
No, no, keep it, keep it. Cause I have one. Yeah, yeah, we have it.
Thank you.
Okay. We good, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Item I, Request of Relative Department Administration, Number of ADUs permitted by the town during two previous calendar years, and number of ADUs issued a certificate of occupancy by the town during two previous calendar years. That is settled now.
This is resolved.
That, that, we can take that off. Okay, motion to take that off.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Historic Preservation, Woody Hill and Hall Schools.
Sheila came back from a trip and she was wanting to talk to the guy that lives down in the Woody Hill school area to get some prices on it.
Okay. Let's see. Complaint Regarding Four Fifteen Hog House Hill Road.
Well, I spoke into a couple of people on this.
That went to the zoning.
Yeah, so I went with Ron initially to the property and I met with the owner, uh, Joe, um...
Demarco.
Demarco. And he doesn't live on the property. He lives in Dover, New Hampshire.
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, okay. Lives in Dover, Massachusetts. And he did, uh... He did, there are people living there, four people he indicated, two in sheds and two in cameras. And I was with Ron. Ron kinda felt as though it was a zoning issue, so Hal has spoken to him on the phone a couple of times. He, the gentleman actually feels as though he's helping people and they have no other option. I spoke with Jessica. Jessica said there's, to, for her to help, it was Hal's suggestion. And she said the state has no beds. There's really nothing that she knows of that she can do. There hasn't been a, a written violation, if that's the proper word, from Hal or Ron. There hasn't been a formal complaint. There was a, there was an anonymous voicemail that was sent in via email, I think. But that wasn't a formal complaint, so there's no formal complaint. There's no violation. I spoke with a attorney table. No, no violation has been made. The council doesn't have, there's no formal complaint. The council doesn't need to act on it. There's not much, we, we don't wanna, it's kind of a crappy situation. We don't wanna... I don't think we wanna do anything to... He's trying to get, he's trying to place these people. The owner is trying to get rid of them. He doesn't know what he can do to get rid of them, to help, you know, to help them find a place to live. So I don't know that there's anything we need to do. Maybe we just, uh, take it off the agenda unless it comes to our attention again.
Okay.
Could we put it off first on a court of policy?
It's, it's just a nauseating joke.
It's a nauseating.
Nauseating joke.
Motion to remove from the agenda. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Request of Offices, Boards, and Committees, Town Council Assistant Report, Kent Finley.
I'm listening, Paul.
Okay. Uh, Solicitors Report.
Uh, nothing to report. Anybody have any questions about any legal matter, do you call?
Mike had number four in ten.
Okay. The Exeter Tax Collector wants to remind everyone that the, there are three properties remaining on the tax sale list that were advertised in the standard time newspaper on May eighteenth. Please remind the public if they have delinquent real estate taxes, now is the time to bring their current. That's number four.
That's number ten.
Yes. So we had discussed at a, at prior meetings about the budget and if the DPW was gonna go over budget, they needed our... I believe that we said they, they cost by, by ordinance, they need our... I would think they would need our permission before they spend money beyond their budget. And we have a, a letter from Rob stating that, uh, as we agreed with that to inform you that there was no avoiding going over. So despite cutting back on any and all non-critical purchases to operate, the current trajectory will put the Public Works budget seventeen thousand to twenty thousand over budget. I just, I just wanna make sure that before anything is spent over budget, that the town council is, is consulted when we approve it.
The party lady.
It's over.
It's already spent, over?
Yes. Yes, which, which we talked about a couple of months ago during the, the budget workshops and whatnot.
Looking at it, it looks to be parts and repairs on it.
Yes.
Well, what truck did what?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Just for the emissions. That's one piece.
With seventeen thousand miles on it. When I was looking at the bill sheet the other day, I'm looking at the parts. I know where he's going with it.
Was it an emergency? You had to do it? Well, I was prepping for it because we had to have the truck. We didn't get hit hard, but I had to be prepped. Did you consult with the president? Yeah.
He called me before he fixed it and, uh...
I'm good. Thank you.
This is just more subject with me and new equipment permission stuff and, uh... It puts that truck, it was just out of warranty.
Yep.
It's got seventeen thousand miles.
Had sixteen empty tires.
And over twenty thousand repairs. That's something that cost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Ron, is that a diesel run truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why you wanna get away from that.
Yeah.
And that was another reason, like these smaller than one tons and that, getting right away from the diesel engines, it's not reliable, so. Okay. Good, Mike?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Communications, other administrative issues.
Do you need to make a motion to move money?
To, to approve the overdraft for Public Works.
Do you need a motion? But it's not on here.
It's by vote of the town council. It's, it's one of the resolutions of the financial town meeting.
Oh, it's, it's, okay. It's at the financial, it's in that resolution. So we have that vote, right?
It says approved by the vote of the town council only. So you have to be aware and acknowledge, I guess, that his department will be over. We've never done that.
But it wasn't on the, it wasn't on the agenda. Can we do that? It's not on the agenda.
We'll need to see what, how, how's the agenda.
We're under reports.
Under reports.
This, this was part of his report.
Yeah.
We could do, uh, it is a, do a special on the twentieth? We can do these, yeah?
Just as long as we do it by the end of June. Before the board.
The Public Works. And yeah, I think you better act tonight to do that.
I mean, I did put that out there for the...
I think you could do that. I mean, given the fact that we're coming up against
Right, the end of the year.
And the end of the year, you have it.
And that comes out of the line item like we put in there, what, unfunded balance or something like that in the budget?
Um, no, so his line item will be over budget. I mean, it, it happens. But you just, we always try to acknowledge and, and, you know, let you know and...
Acknowledge receipt. Will that do enough because...
Might be better.
And refer to the financial town meeting?
It says, um, the overdraft resolution. Any overdrafts as indicated in the town's report be and they are hereby approved by the vote of the town council only. So does that mean?
They should take a motion to acknowledge the overdraft and then approve, you know, prove the...
Well, I pulled it, made it part of the record.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I, I think that's correct. I think, given that it's in the report, report requires certain action by the town. I think the town council.
Now, we normally haven't done this, but it was brought to the attention. We just don't want to...
I haven't done it. It's not much of a possibility to do it.
So you should acknowledge the draft overdraft. Right? And then approve of funds, what, approve funds being...
Transfer from the...
No, 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 we have transferring anywhere that they allow overdraft of funds for the, um, Department of Public Works. You'll just, you'll be over budget. That's all I mean.
You don't need to make a motion. I'll be doing a motion.
He's writing a motion right now.
But she can't make a motion.
Just write it out for you.
Hang it out for us, hell. I'll do it.
Acknowledge the overdraft and allow the overdraft for the Public Works budget.
Yeah, say, excuse me.
Make that motion.
Hang on, in accordance, in accordance with the letter dated May thirty, twenty twenty-three, contained in the report of the Director of Public Works.
Second?
You second it?
I'll second it, okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I was looking at the bill sheet the other day. I'm like, gee, you break the law.
Blank check box.
Yeah.
Other than the street?
Okay. Nothing, no communications. We don't need to do executive session, do we?
We did one.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I went and bought a filter for the one, for the screen plant the other day.
We saw that.
This was across the nine blocks. I think it was forty-eight.
Everything, deliveries, everything.
Maria has to get approval from the state.
We got one thing, right?
And then move back to her. Do it. And I gave it for fifteen, twenty-five thousand. And it goes over and I...
I hope I did.
I think it's easier one at a time.
Whenever, whenever practical is possible. I didn't see anything. And then I saw it here.
Six, five.
Yeah, I'm excited.
I put her up till I saw ya. Thank you, Jim.
Good night, everybody.
Take care, Jim. Travis, see you.
Thank you. Yep, have a good night.
What?
Can you sign a vice card?
Good.
Uh... Sorry.
I'm gonna save him because he's gonna go off the date. He's gonna walk into the library and work.
For thirty thousand dollars, say that's recital.
That's ten minutes. No.
I got them all signed.
No, you didn't.
I missed one.
You missed.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
All right. I'm gonna sign two places. See you, Rob.
Have a good night.
You too, buddy. Take care. Travis. I gotta sign it three places. Is another one? I don't think I signed that one.
What are you gonna do, spoil it? I mean, there's nothing.
Thank you, brother.
What, that one spot?
What, Rob?
Shut it down. The guy's a one-ness after shit.
I got a little panic.
You probably, there's the smog on. You wipe it down, wait. You think you're... There's nine feet in that.
I haven't turned it off.
It wasn't for nothing. What the hell from his trailer park? Jack Martin was gonna get him a half a million.
I get, I get, I get. Kevin, uh, Dean Connor and David Chydrabrower kinda thing, cause there's fifty acres to the right. There's more property in back.
The wall of houses back there. And they get rid of all the trailers. No one paying. And Jeff had money.
How do I do it? Sit through his meetings? Lawyer is just terrible. Interesting.
You know what I did years ago? I came to council meeting. I never told this. I came to council meeting and sat in the front row.